Good morning. Good to see everybody. Welcome to this panel on reflecting backward. You will find in the program a rationale for the conversation we're going to have this morning. Basically, we're going to take an opportunity on the 75th anniversary of ICA to discuss changes or failures to change and debates over the past decades. And here we have six scholars who will talk about three different periods. The periods will be 1975 to 1985. Why that and not 1970 to 1980? That will be part of the conversation. Then 1985 to 1995, and then 1995 to 2005. For you recognize, you know, the speakers Larry Gross, Byron Reeves, Barbie Seliser, Sonia Livingstone, Jean Kew, and Radhika Paramashan. So we're going to start with, let's go back to the 70s, shall we? Larry, each speaker will have each speaker will have seven minutes, seven minutes, and that is seven minutes. So Larry, take it away.
Okay, so let me begin by saying that this today's experience is exactly something I have often warned my students about. If you're using a PowerPoint, be prepared for what you do when it doesn't work. This is the only slide that works in my, in my PowerPoint. Apparently, it was made on PowerPoint for Apple and PowerPoint for whatever doesn't recognize it. So there it is. The, the dates here, 74 to 85, are chosen in part, and let me just, let me just say initially, I'm very happy that Jeff Pulli, drawing on the work that Dave Park had done, gave you a lot of this introduction yesterday, and you were all at the plenary, I'm sure. So you, you already know a lot about this period up until 1974. Why 1974? Shortly before that, sometime 1972 or '03, George Gerbner, my colleague and dean at the Annenberg School at Penn, had lunch with me and another colleague, Saul Worth, whom some of you will remember. And George said he had been asked by the ICA to run for president or to become the editor of the Journal. What did we think? And we said immediately, the Journal. Much more important, lasts longer, in a one-year presidency, doesn't do much of anything. The Journal could use some help. The, the Journal could use some help. And George, and again, for those of you who know anything about George, won't be surprised. George made a deal with the, I'll maybe also say, a lot of what I'm saying here is beautifully illustrated in the digital exhibit out there. So if you don't get everything you want here, just go out there and press the little things and you'll see a lot of this detail. In 1974, or probably 1973, ICA gave the Journal of Communication to the Annenberg School. And it was then edited and published by the Annenberg School until, I think, 2001, when it moved to Oxford, where it is again now. And that, to my mind, was really a decisive moment in the evolution of ICA. Because what George did, let me point out, with the abundant resources invested in him by the Annenbergs, was expand the focus, expand the horizons, expand the participants of the Journal far beyond what it seemed. And again, if you look at in the, in the physical exhibit out there, in one of the things you can see, the first issue of the Journal of Communication published by Annenberg and the last issue published by ICA. The difference between them is enormous, visible in, in every way. And he brought in editors from all over the world. He brought in contributors and opened it up. And this was a period in which, as you already heard, forecast. Yesterday, the field was opening up. And at that point, however, it was primarily, by then, sort of dominated by what could be characterized unfairly as a Midwestern positivist quantitative social science perspective. But other voices were beginning to come in, other perspectives, other things. And the field was in ferment. And the term ferment, there is a direct reference to a very important landmark issue of the Journal of Communication in 1983 called Ferment in the Field. If we had pictures, I could show it to you with all the names of the contributors. It was a landmark in recognizing these multitude of voices that we're now beginning to hear. Oversimplified, I would say, that in addition to the North American positivist quantitative social science tradition, there was the cultural studies perspective largely developed around the Birmingham School in Britain. But not only those voices, there was other, there were other cultural perspectives, other humanistic perspectives. There was the perspective of humanistic studies that was heavily inflected by audience research, by reception research that was happening both in the United States and in Europe. There was a political economy perspective that George himself was very devoted to and very interested in promoting. So there were these other voices, and there was, in some sense, ferment. There were fights, disagreements. This was a field into some extent, in turmoil, captured to my mind, in some extent, by the moment when Brad Greenberg, former ICA president at one point, then Chair of the Department of Michigan State, told the department that books would not be counted in tenure considerations, only journal articles. And this reflected a kind of paradigm conflict. My, I want to end now, I want to get to, and this is the final example here. The 1985 ICA conference in, in Hawaii, which was called Beyond Polemics: Paradigm Dialogues. And this was a moment at which these issues were brought together. Brenda Durbin organized it in order to resolve and coordinate. The plenary speakers were Stuart Hall and Anthony Giddens from Britain. There were other people involved, and I just want to point out just one thing, it was, I don't want to run over my time, which was, to my mind, enormously illustrative of the state of trying to bring things together. There was a session called What Does the "I" in ICA Mean? This was a roundtable discussion. And in the program, you can see there are panelists, Klaus Krippendorf and James Anderson. And then there is a list of 35 names. And it turns out, not surprisingly, that list of 35 names is actually the list of all the previous ICA presidents. All but one men, all but one American, and many names you would never have heard of, as Jim illustrated yesterday. So when ICA in 1985 was asking, what is the "I", the people they thought should be commenting on this was this list of prior presidents. I'll conclude with a personal, my personal experience at that ICA meeting, where, as I said, Brenda was kind of putting these paradigms in potential conflict or cooperation. And there was a session on three approaches to American cultural studies. And I was one of the presenters, speaking about the cultural indicators, the cultivation perspective. And the discussion was Stuart Hall. And it was quite clear to me from the whole set of the conference that Stuart was there to basically hit, bash me, to explain why this positivist approach was inappropriate. So I gave it, I, you know, presented the cultivation perspective and paradigm. And Stuart stood up and said, I agree with everything. The only disagreement, he said, is that you're talking about ideology and you don't use the term. And I said, yes, that's true. We don't use the term ideology, although I've suggested it. George says, if you use the term ideology, half the audience is turned off right away. Because at that point, ideology means, you know, those communists or something. And the other reason, which George didn't quite articulate, but was pretty clear, was that one member of the audience who might be turned off by the term ideology was Walter Annenberg, through whose resources the Journal of Communication had become, I think, a true opener up of the field.
Thank you, Larry, for reminding me of my advisor, my PhD advisor Bradley Greenberg, who I attended my first ICA conference in 1974, New Orleans, with him. I remember that comment and his advice to me. So these years are good for me. 1975 was my first job at the University of Wisconsin. 1985 was my second and last job at Stanford. And I'm going to reflect on a couple of memories, more personal, about what was happening at that period on my interaction with the field. I, I had two questions. I, I was a Bachelor of Fine Arts major in graphic design, coming into Michigan State, competing with all the would-be social scientists and a little bewildered by what they were all up to. But I wondered if this field was going to make it in, in my naive way. And then the second thing I worried about, the second question I'll reflect on a bit here, will I make it? What can I do to actually survive that? So, I mean, looking around the conference today, we can all be pretty proud of the institutions and the people in them that make up ICA and the field of communication. But in 1975, that was, it was different. There were, in New Orleans, there were hundreds of people, not thousands of people. I doubt very many of them needed a passport to get to the conference. People were coming from programs that were brand new. Many of them, if not most of them, less than 10 years old, or maybe even a couple of years old as communication research interests were being added to other professional programs. It's hard to appreciate now, as someone who was just being introduced to the field then, it's hard to appreciate now the need back then to sell the field. This needed, we were preoccupied with legitimation, I thought, of the field relative to other humanities and social sciences. And when I arrived at Stanford in 1985, there were similar worries. You'd meet with a dean and they'd say, remind me what they do in the Department of Communication? And why is it that Harvard, Princeton, Yale doesn't have a Department of Communication? And do we really need one? And questions of that sort. But this preoccupation with the status of the field was very much imprinted on me. And I think ICA was very much part of that, for better and worse. And the preoccupation may have been partly responsible, as John Peters has written, for evaluations of a little bit of intellectual poverty that might have come from preoccupation with talking about the discipline rather than that what the discipline should be, should be studying. So ICA was encouraging that. As Larry said, there were all kinds of debates. There was quantification, qualitative research, quantitative research, academic, applied, humanistic, scientific, empirical, critical. Definitions of core concepts were papers at ICA. What is communication process intention media? There was lots of stuff being done, lots of authors were contributing papers about the field and about core concepts. In retrospect, maybe a little too much, although it got us to where we are today. So a second reflection for me personally is in that 10-year period. How did I survive? Or how did anyone survive? What was the field doing to promote intellectual professional development? You needed to have a point of view. And I can remember sitting with Ellen Wortella as assistant professors, trying to figure out what our point of view was about cultural studies and empirical studies. You needed to have a point of view, but it was also clear you weren't going to write about that point of view to get tenure or to have that be part of, part of your resume. So you needed to answer the question of how you were going to, how you're going to progress. I got a lot of those answers at ICA when I came in 1994, 1974 with Bradley to present a paper, the perceived reality of, children's perceived reality of television. We, we had a review at that session. Reviews were huge then, they were, they were the main events, I thought, in a lot of sessions. It was highly critical. And I got my first experience with the four words that I've come to both appreciate and loathe, and they were, where is your theory? What is your theory? And I didn't have a good answer to that, but it was clear to me that you needed to have a good answer. Where do you find an answer to that? ICA was where I found, or we all found answers to that. We had lots of choices. There was a lot of physics psych envy going on. We were borrowing theories from that discipline and using them. Social learning theory, cognitive developmental theory, attribution theory, balance theories. Those theories were great for generating hypotheses that could be tested empirically, reported in journals. But I also think, in retrospect especially, that they biased the field, especially in the kinds of things we were looking at. So in simple, and I'm speaking now mostly from my area in media psychology. So other areas may be similar or different. But in simple media effects terms, they put an emphasis on the effects rather than the media that were thought to cause the effect. So how does child development work? What's an attitude and how does it change over time? How are attitudes related to behaviors? The theories tended to ignore, I thought, in our areas, rich descriptions of what was going on in media, because media were starting to change at that point. So all the new, new thoughts about fragmentation and multitasking and task switching, things that came right from the nature of how media were presented, were being ignored. And I thought this emphasis also really importantly influenced the methods that we were using. They put the emphasis on measuring the criteria, the dependent variables. But they also ignored how we assess media experiences. And that may be one of the more embarrassing features of media psych research over the decades is that that's never been done particularly well. And we can measure FMRI responses from 4,000 adolescents every month for an entire year and relate it to media with the question, on an average Tuesday, how many hours do you spend with Instagram? And we don't find anything, and I wonder why. So that bias was there with, with that assessment, assessment early on, as well as a bias toward deduction, deducing hypotheses, generating hypotheses, and not recognizing the importance of induction and description in that inductive deductive progression there. So fast forward to 2025, what's the status of those two survival questions? I'm happily in a department that is, in my view, is an epicenter of media issues in, in my university. We are, we have few controversies about disciplinary field definitions or core concept definitions. We only have connections to other disciplines. Most of us are appointed elsewhere in the university. And it's just a wonderful collection of topical interest and importance that really, we've almost forgotten to worry about the field. Good, that's good. On the theory side, I'm happily working inductively, trying to describe what's going on in media. Over the last five years, we've collected about a billion screenshots of smartphones and are looking at them, trying, mostly getting the computer to look at them, to see what's on them and describe what's happening in the media experiences without respect to any particular theory, because it's probably relevant to, to tens and tens of theories. So we're making, one of my favorite things to do is to watch movies of how these screens change every five seconds that the devices are on. And when I watch those movies, we all feel like we're finally getting a sense of what it is that we should be having a theory about. So here's the 75 more years.
Hello. Thank you for the opportunity to join this panel. The brief I was given by Barbie was what went right or wrong about ICA in the communication field in 1985 to 95. So I have some data for this talk. I asked a few people last night, people younger than me at the reception, what they knew of 1985 to 95, and nothing came to mind. So you'll have to forgive a little autobiography, like autoethnography, like others. I had to go back to my CV and see what was I doing in 1985 to 1995. So in 1985, I was in the middle of my PhD. And exactly as Byron just said, I was trying to persuade the University of Oxford that media and communications was actually a field worthy of doing a PhD, a little footnote in defense of Bradley Greenberg. He came to Oxford around then, and I'd had my first reviewer too. And he said, this is actually not a reject, this is an accept if you work more. And I thought, you know, I was, I was out anyway. So in defense. 1987, I got my PhD in the Audience Reception of Soap Opera, which definitely puzzled the Oxford Department of Experimental Psychology. And I was trying to do what I think the, the two previous speakers have been saying. I was trying to kind of meld mass communication methods with what Stuart Hall called an exciting moment for audience studies. And that was kind of part of their effort to bring cultural studies into ICA and into this field. In 1988, I had a postdoc with Elihu Katz and Tamar Libas on comparative soap opera research. And we spent a lot of time reading work in the humanities, in literary studies, and also discussing media events, which they were then fascinated by, and which was kind of the forerunner of today's focus on mediation and mediatization. So my first ICA was 1989. It was when Jay Blumler was president. The conference was called Comparatively Speaking. And it was absolutely his effort to internationalize ICA by trying to recognize within this field and articulate diverse media cultures and also diverse academic cultures. 1990, the following ICA was in Dublin. I was with Roger Silverstone, and we were doing those first research on the kind of ethnographic turn and the beginning of domestication research. Peter Lunt and I began an audience study of talk shows around that time, which was in response to the very lively debates happening within and outside ICA following the translation into English of Habermas's work on the public sphere. And by 1996, the ICA in Chicago, which is the end of my period, I gave a paper I see called Rethinking Audiences Towards a New Agenda, which I'm afraid is a paper I've given many versions of since. And by 1998, extending my period a little much, but Jay Blumler had facilitated my first cross-national comparative study of children in what we called new media, which kind of set my career. So in, in kind of reviewing my CV, I asked myself what the value is in looking back in this way. I think those of us rethinking audience studies, undertaking comparative and ethnographic studies, exploring audience participation and more, I think we felt there were three kinds of struggle that we were engaged with. So the first was a struggle within ICA, given its rigid division structure, the dominance of mass comm, American positivism, and so on, as we've heard. Charge for Jeff, if I may, it's very hard to discover when the different divisions began from anything public on ICA. But I think it's interesting that popular communication began in 86, 87, sorry, feminist division 86, popular communication 87, global communication, social change, and so on, much later. So this was like turning a slow steamship, and that's how we talked of it. The struggles beyond ICA are, of course, much more significant in the field. But I see now an insistence on research with and with those impacted by media power, efforts in our research to recognize their agency, however constrained and not romanticized, as critics like to say. A real effort in our field to recognize the diversity of people's life circumstances, of listening to and amplifying voices from below in an increasingly politicized public sphere. And then third, as Byron also mentioned, the struggles within the academy to recognize our field. New programs, new student opportunities, new subject associations. And, and of course, kind of riding the wave of what was actually the increasing importance in the public domain of media and technologies. So a few reflections. Great. So reconstructing even the history you've lived through is hard. The present seems to write out the past. It seems to me we're all pivoted to the digital. Everyone's studying AI. And the global, which was a kind of exciting for many years, is now heavily critiqued. I fear that much may be lost. I went back and had a look at Journal of Communication for 1985, and actually, it was pretty interesting, though I hadn't looked at it for 40 years. Articles on the telenovela, computers in schools, what revolution? Role of Palestinian media in the West Bank? Contextualism, narrative theory, religious communication, repairing the news, personal privacy in an electronic age? Press freedom? I mean, actually, we could, we can go back and have a look. Why wasn't the US and UNESCO, what's happening to USAID, all there in 1985? I'm just... So thinking about those moments in audience reception studies, domestication, public sphere that I was part of, and you'll all have different examples. I could see them as kind of fertile engagements with other disciplines. I think we were exploring the relations between communication, literary studies, social studies of technology, political and critical philosophy, which was very generative, but in some ways also kind of spawned new movements. So if I think about where those went, the trends in, in kind of my decade, we did spawn new, new associations. So there was crossroads in cultural studies, and a lot of cultural studies people went there. There was the Association of Internet Researchers kind of born then, and a lot of digital and internet talk went there. ICRA was formed, and a lot of European researchers finally had a place to discuss the public sphere and more. So, you know, I think it's kind of interesting that things were developing here, but perhaps also then had a new life elsewhere. Last words, so I've noticed that as we all greet each other at this ICA and say, how are you? Everyone makes a sad face. It's quite hard to say things are great right now. And that made me think of the way in which Elihu Katz mapped the traditions of audience research over the decades of the 20th century against the politics of the times and what was happening in each decade. And how audience agency, something I researched, kind of comes to form in more optimistic times compared with when the politics are oppressive, as they clearly are now. So 1985 to 95 now looks to me like kind of a nice decade, even though we never thought so then. But now, of course, we need the critical moral than ever. Perhaps, well, actually, I think definitely, we still believe, I hope, that people's voices in their diverse circumstances can still be generative, can still introduce alternative imaginaries, and can help us broaden our conceptual and methodological toolbox. I asked ChatGPT last night why I was giving this talk. And it said, it gave me two quotes, I'm going to end on, from Edward Said, knowing one's history, particularly the intellectual genealogy of a discipline, is an act of resistance against amnesia and a way of re-entering the present with a fuller awareness. And Donna Haraway, we are responsible for the histories we inherit and stories we tell about our disciplines, recollecting as a form of accountability and a mode of reconfiguring what knowledge might become. Thank you.
So I'm going to consolidate my newfound reputation as Debbie Downer. I was the only one, I think, in the video last night who was saying negative things. But I do want to say that as I'm hearing so much about how we haven't changed as much as we thought we changed, I, I want to echo Byron, your sentiment from before, saying, are we going to make it? So I just want to say that out there, or lay that out there. I want to start by thinking about practice and the relationship between both the discipline and our association. And the way, I would argue, it pretty, they pretty much missed the boat in recognizing what is singular about communication. So I'm going to be speaking about journalism over the long decade of the 1980s. But I'm doing so as a placeholder for all the other practice-oriented parts of our discipline. Marketing, PR, advertising, org comm, policy studies, performance studies, speech. As a discipline, we came of age in a time that required us to figure out how to relate to all the older people and older fields that had been in the environment before us. And for them, disciplines were the ordering principle for identifying, ranking, and classifying knowledge. And the idea was to create conformity inside the discipline and distinctiveness beyond it, right? And following these traits, we, we came to recognize academic journals, library catalogs, foundations, fellowships, awards, and of course, scholarly associations like ICA. But I'm not sure we ever figured out how to position ourselves against this context. Instead of clarifying the different conditions and traits that characterized us, we defined ourselves as a discipline by using the perspective and terms of choice that were favored by all these older fields. And that has not worked to our advantage. The fact is, older disciplinary environments didn't like us very much. They didn't value us very much. And this was a huge issue in the 1980s, because value was everything. This was Reaganomics, it was, it was Thatcherism, it was pushing to instrumentalize knowledge. So we got all kinds of fun things like entrepreneurship and rankings. But oddly, because it would have made sense... So we got all kinds of fun things like entrepreneurship and rankings, but oddly, because it would have made sense, not enough of a push to connect theory with practice. And this, despite the fact that even classic fields like medicine or law had that very connection, and newer fields like information science or computer science that came of age pretty much at the same time in the same way. This, of course, is all distinct from neoliberalism strategizing the connection for its own objectives. So not recognizing our particular link to practice, I argue, is a missed opportunity. It's an anchor for how many in our field make sense of things. Its centrality has helped push a different model of disciplinary formation. And as a field, we do exactly the opposite of what classic disciplines do. We highlight internal variability over conformity, external amenability or neighborliness over external distinctiveness. And this kind of faded because we never owned it. And that made it easier to take us down with all the old terms of reference that decoded our strengths as failing. So we were critiqued for our incoherence, our unevenness, our youth, our lack of a canon, our reliance on imported knowledge. And part of that, of course, was because we never developed the kind of survival tools that older disciplines had to develop as a matter of course. Think, for instance, about why we have no forbears. Where are our Durkheims or Weber's? Think about why we have citation practices that often strategically are no older than the latest technology. When I came into the academy in the eighties and when I came to ICA the first time in nineteen eighty-seven, I came with the experience of being a journalist. And I was looking forward to finding an environment that could bring the old me together with the new me. Larry talked about ferment in the field, but I want to remind us that ferment was pretty limited. While it certainly highlighted disciplinary openness and the coexistence of behavioral and critical research, positivist and interpretive methods, it didn't say one word about communication's singular relationship with practice. And nor did ICA. When I came, I came, when I came into the academy, I came to ICA that very year. And at that time, journalism was seen as part of mass comm, where it was subsidiary to the study primarily of media effects. That wasn't quite how I saw things. And so when I came, I looked around and I thought, well, I'll try the newly formed interest group of popular communication or philosophy, theory, and critique, which also delivered partial understandings, but they happened to be more in tune with my own training in literature and political science. What we didn't get, in any case, were were studies of journalism that helped push a necessary recognition of practice across the discipline. This was not only ICA, it was all institutional projects that touched on journalism and other than journalism quarterly, which was very much in line with a particular kind of journalism research. There was no journalism-focused journal until both Journalism and Journalism Studies came on the scene in two thousand. And to date, there is no ICA-affiliated journal that focuses on journalism or more broadly on our unique theory-practice connection as a topic worthy of discussion in and of itself. So we missed emphasizing what was valuable, even foundational, about what we do differently. Twelve years ago, Ernie Wilson, then dean at Annenberg West, wrote that the centrality of communication in the world does not match the centrality of communication in the academy. And sadly, I think that's still the case. Communication is everywhere in the world. Communication in the academy still kind of limps along at the end of a line of disciplines that are typically regarded as still more central, important, or inspirational. Thanks.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Barbie. Jack, you ready? Thank you.
Thank you for having me on this panel to talk about changes and continuities, failures and successes in the decades from nineteen ninety-five onwards. Initially, we were talking about should the decade start with nineteen ninety or two thousand? But when I saw it start from nineteen ninety-five, I said, yay, that's my decade. It's the decade of inflection, because nineteen ninety-five was the first year I started to study communication. Before nineteen ninety-five, I was an English major. And nineteen ninety-five, I was beginning to study international and intercultural communication in Peking University. But at that time, in order to watch American TV, okay, only CNN, not the entertainment part, right? I had to borrow an ID from a neighboring college. Okay, it's called International Relations College. Basically, it's a place where China trained its spies. And so the spy had to watch CNN to know how to have a conversation. So I had to borrow someone's ID to go there to watch CNN after biking for twenty minutes in the cold wind of Beijing. And and in that same year, nineteen ninety-five, my school, the currently is known as the Winkuwe School of Communication and Information, was still three years old. And it was still called the School of Communication. And then the school of coming back then was our founding dean was Professor Eddie Core. He started a conference, okay, so with NTU and also Hua Zhong University of Science and Technology and Journalism History Association of China, so the peak organization of China, to have a conference called Chinese Press and Chinese Civilization Conference. And this year is the thirtieth anniversary. So we are going to have this conference in Singapore, right? After thirty years, it's no longer called Chinese Press, but it's called Chinese Media, Chinese Language Media. And so that was nineteen ninety-five to me, right? Now we are revisiting. And in late nineteen nineties, I tried twice to submit to ICA, and both times I was rejected. I almost gave up. So nineteen ninety-nine, that was my first ICA submission. Nineteen, two thousand was my second, but luckily I did not, okay. Two thousand and one, finally, I had a paper submitted and accepted in ICA, Washington DC. So that was my first. And so that was inflection. And by the end of that decade, two thousand and four, I just got my PhD and started to work in Chinese University of Hong Kong. But those are the small aspects why they call it my decade. But this decade is also a decade when, you know, the Soviet Union just collapsed. And in Asia and across the world of Global South, we see this quote-unquote decade of globalization on the surface when Americana was in prevail. It's not just CNN, but also MTV and internet. By the way, China started to have internet in nineteen ninety-five. I did not know how much that had impact on my scholarship later on. So on the surface, okay, we see there's a new wave of, so from nineteen ninety-five onward, this new wave of internet-based developmentalism, right, or the modernization paradigm, as Ev Rogers, who called us, by the way, he was a visiting professor twice in Nanyang University in this decade, along with other colleagues like Vinnie Moscow and George George Wong, who was specializing in de-Westernizing media and the communications theory, and several other colleagues. So this was actually a very ferment, okay, decade. We have other colleagues, Guangxin, Chen Guangxin, who was Harno Hart's PhD student from Iowa. And he was a system, he was also working in Singapore, National University of Singapore at the time, to develop later on his masterpiece called Asia as Methods. It's not just about Asia, but Asia, Africa, or or Global South interreferencing, how methodological pluralism can be used. We need, we absolutely need methodological pluralism to overcome Eurocentrism and our own methodological nationalism. And so that we can understand the media, communication, and culture from diverse roots. So this was a decade when people, while on the surface, on a popular level, we see this global American hegemony. But under the surface, including in Singapore, in our school, we are talking about how there are actually long-seated, you know, civilization roots, right? Not just, okay, I'm Chinese. So we talk about faith, harmony, of course. Guominten, right, has been elaborating on how harmony means, okay, in communication terms. But also from India, right, we have concepts such as dvali means suggestion or mindful communication. Okay, I think these are very important ideas for today's rethinking about AI, how we can use a mindful distance to reflect on AI. But this was the decade when also, of course, with Islam, okay, the ideas of Amana trust or Wasatiya moderation, okay, not go to the extreme. All these things were emphasized through an Amic perspective, rather than from a European-American ethic perspective. But within the traditional societies, there are roots of wisdom that we can think about, not just de-Westernize, but indigenize and locally develop these southern theories in the plural. And the decade also ends with the book, my student would call it the H and M book, because it's Halley and Manchin. Right, it's the comparative media systems, so that we can see even the West is internally so plural. And so the methodological pluralism, of course, is something that I think we can still benefit in today's world. Thank you.
Hi, everyone. I'm also very honored to be on this panel and special thanks to Barbie for inviting me. Delighted to see everyone here and all of you in the audience. I'm here to talk a little bit, you know, and I have very informal comments about post-colonial media and communication studies. And we've already heard about how our field, right, came along. You know, it's a pretty, it's still a pretty new kid in the block, at least in the university block, and struggling very much for credibility, legitimacy, et cetera. So post-colonial studies certainly originated in the humanities, English literary studies, then travel to film studies. And then in the late eighties and early nineties, we begin to see it rare, you know, raring its voice in media and communication studies. And I was very lucky to benefit from those who actually began to, you know, pioneer and bring its insights into media and communication studies. And one of them is here in the audience. Thank you, Radha. Radha Hegde. Please, applause. Yes. I can still remember when Radha edited a special issue of Comm Theory on post-colonial studies. And, you know, I was lucky enough to be in that issue. So yeah, around the time I was getting my PhD and entering the academy and somebody mentioned University of Iowa, very proudly from the University of Iowa. This is very much a field that is tied to cultural studies. If anybody knows of its connection to social science, tell me. I am not aware of that, right? So just to situate it. So post-colonial theory offered a very complex, rich, and nuanced framework to understand many phenomena under consideration, particularly in the late eighties and early nineties, when we began to see globalization spreading across the world. And we witnessed the opening up of many nations and, you know, in the Global South that were post-colonial societies. These economies were liberalizing and and, you know, you could see the impact that colonialism had on the specific kinds of formations, right, that were occurring and taking shape under this phenomenon we called globalization. Now, some of the fundamental elements of post-colonial theory that have been very helpful as we go through the nineties and to today, that have been very helpful to understanding media and communication phenomena. Number one is a very deeply historical historicized understanding of power. And it's so helpful that one of our speakers already cited Said, Edward Said, so I won't do that, yes? And so understanding the impact of Euro-American colonialism, you know, and how it profoundly altered many societies, economies, and cultures, including, of course, media culture, legacy media, and today, as we see, digital colonialism, right? The most powerful global corporate technological companies happen to be located in the West, many of them in the US. And so in fact, after a somewhat retreat from cultural imperialism, we may be back to thinking about that, right? In very concentrated ways and thinking about how post-colonial theory could help us understand the kinds of power, right, we're seeing cultural power, economic power, power asymmetries today. The second thing that's been very helpful is the construction of civilizational differences, right? Anchored to the reinforcement of Western power, and particularly for me as a feminist scholar, centered on women's conditions and how colonialism often, you know, positioned itself as a force that could liberate oppressed Third World women from their own cultures, right? And so this very interesting hinging, right, of colonial power and how it, you know, justified itself depending on the conditions of women. And that's been very helpful to understand Western media representations of Western military interventions across the world, right? How was, you know, the liberation of women often brought up as a justification for doing this? And many media scholars have used this framework to parse out the rhetorics, right, of this sort of civilizational justification. At the same time, I would also say that even as post-colonial studies in the media and communication field particularly, has thought about, you know, how Western power is continuing well past the, you know, formal colonialism colonialism has ended. There's also a very complex consideration of power from a very much more Foucauldian perspective in that going beyond binaries, right? So that you have conditions of the global north in the global south. You have conditions of the global south in the global north. It is not as though, right, you can separate the global north from the global south so neatly. In fact, what we have today is, some would argue, a transnational elite, right? A transnational elite and also trying to give us some historical understanding to the formations of diaspora. How has colonialism shaped the diaspora, whether it's in the UK or in the US and other parts of the global north? So these are the many different productive ways in which I think post-colonial theory has really helped the field understand from a very historical and historicized perspective, how power is shaped, you know, across the world. Having said that, I do think, you know, at least within the ICA community and NCA communities where post-colonial studies has really, you know, come into its own, there are still some blind spots to consider, right? And I hope the next generation of scholars can take these under, you know, think about these. Often, post-colonial theory has been very helpful to study issues at the level of nation. So there tends to be a sort of methodological nationalism, right? So once you start getting into more local, right, realities, tribal divisions, caste divisions, how can we use post-colonial theory, you know, at that level in a very, in a helpful way? To a large degree, we've also seen quite a, you know, focus on British colonialism. And that could be tied to the biographies of scholars who've actually, right, studied and use post-colonial theory. And also, let's think about how the academy's power, particularly, you know, within ICA, NC, and our other associations, is very much tied to scholarship in the English language. That is in itself, right, saying that is in itself something very profoundly tied to post-colonial theory. So, you know, given that the sort of linguistic, you know, asymmetries, it is not surprising that we've seen a focus on British colonialism. How might we consider, for example, issues as, you know, very germane to today, settler colonialism, right? We've seen a lot of focus on plantation colonialism, mercantile colonialism. But how can we anchor post-colonial theory in a more productive way to settler colonialism? And and I'll finally end by saying that one of the things that has struck me as an educator, I'm a scholar certainly, but I'm also a teacher, is the construction of post-colonial studies and post-colonial theory as somewhat esoteric bodies of knowledge that are largely consumed, you know, within journals, et cetera. I would urge us to rethink how we can use the insights of this field, you know, to teach undergraduates. So I teach a course on global media, and I've started devoting two to three weeks in the course, right? If you think about it, in the nineteenth century, there were very, very few parts of the world that were untouched by some kind of colonialism. And let's think about that and how profound that is. What might it mean to teach a media history course in the US that starts with indigenous communities in the US, right? What what might it mean, you know, to take this issue very seriously and let it percolate downward into our, you know, beyond, you know, the the Hyatt Regency or the Grand Hyatt, right? What might it take to actually take it to undergraduates? And I have to say that I had a very good experience teaching undergraduates this phenomenon. And I also talked to them about something called reversing the gaze. What might it mean to look at the US as we might look at other countries? So for example, with the severe retrenchment on women's rights that's taking place now, tied to fundamental forms of Christianity. tied to fundamental forms of Christianity, what might it mean to analyze that as opposed to looking at some other country and saying, how are women suffering under fundamentalist Islam, right? What, how might we use a post-colonial theoretical framework to reverse the gaze, right? And look at countries in the global north under the same lenses as we might in the global south? Thank you all for this opportunity.
Thank you. Thank you very much. So I would like to do next is if the panelists, they have one minute reactions to what you heard so far and then we're going to open for discussion with everybody else. So Larry, do you have any thoughts? Okay. Okay, so we agree with that? Let's go and, you know. Yes, Radha. Do we have a microphone or just? A big abode?
Thank you. I just want to add something to your comments about rejections. This is, this is an editorial observation. In editing the International Journal of Communication for 17 years, which now is wonderfully edited by Sylvia, one of the striking patterns that I noticed and became increasingly irritated by is that when someone submits an article about a topic that takes place in, you might say, in the center, in the United States and Western Europe, it's not located. It's sort of, you know, the relation between X and Y. If someone submits a paper from another part of the world, it's the relation between X and Y in Korea or the relationship between X and Y in some other place. But even more disturbingly, if they don't do that, the reviewers complain. And Esther Hargitay and I sort of began corresponding about this at one point. You know, how frequently, you know, it's like, well, you're not specifying. You know, why would anyone want to know? And or they would say, why is one interested in the relationship between X and Y in Paraguay? You know, it's one of the more distressing and, you know, sort of resilient problems that I think we need to address. And that I certainly tried, as I know Sylvia would, as an editor, to say to a reviewer, you know, come on, stop it.
Now I know what to say.
Specifically on that, the, the interest group began, actually, some things that have already mentioned. When Jay Blumler was organizing the San Francisco meetings, I asked him to organize a session to discuss the creation of a caucus, a group or whatever, you know, an interest group we know is, which we did. We launched that with the help, I would say, of Ellen Martella, who was president after that, who's not here. Ellen also formed the first task force on diversity in 1990 or 91, which I chaired. And our primary recommendation in the early nineties was to institute travel grants for minority students at that point, particularly domestic, although then expanded internationally. And I should say that it took two or three years of board meetings before that was actually done. There was a lot of resistance to it. There was also, I would say, sabotage by Bob Cox, who somehow never had it show up in the minutes after we had agreed to do something. But that was, you know, a moment of change. And the, you're quite right that this group began and became a successful interest group, but remained small. However, I'm very happy to say I was told that as of yesterday, it is now a division. And I suspect that that involved making an exception to the size rule. Because, among other things, it is still the case that in many parts of the world, being openly identified as a member of that community has distinct political risks. And I have to say, that may soon be true of the United States, where I have, with trans people for sure, yeah. And I have too many colleagues who are now looking at their CVs and wondering, you know, how they could possibly apply for grants anymore. So to echo the question about whether this is a good decade or not, it's not.
Thank you. I have a question for Barbie. Barbie, you brought up a very interesting, particularly, I think, in ICA. I go to other conferences where practice, I'll say AGNC, right? Where practice is considered in ways that are not within ICA. And that's okay. I like going to both. I'm not saying one should become the other necessarily. But I wondered if you could talk a little bit more about, you know, about this, about the theory-practice divide and who should this be meaningful to? You know, should academics be considering practice in ways that we are not? And also, I guess the other side of it is, do we want to convince practitioners that we are legitimate and credible? Because you had talked a little bit about how we're still struggling vis-à-vis other disciplines. But I was also thinking, are we still struggling vis-à-vis those who were educating? Right? And at least the school I come from, most of my undergraduates do not want to be academics, right? They do not. And that's okay. There's too many academics already, perhaps, right? Perhaps, perhaps. I like it that they're not necessarily going into academics. Therefore, I have to make post-colonial theory eligible to them as practitioners. And that holds me to the fire in certain ways, right? So if you could please speak a little bit more about what, you know, what you were alluding to?
Yeah, thanks, Radhika, for that question. I mean, I think it's really important. And I think that it's not only, you're right. It's not only that we separate ourselves from practice in conjunction with other disciplines, but we also separate ourselves from practice, from practitioners who are actually practicing exactly what many of us are studying. And I think Jeff Pooley last night, you know, brought in a wonderful example, which is, as a, as a field, we started with a, with a kind of focus on teaching, right? So practice has been part of us. And the longer it takes us to understand that we actually have something to offer the academy in ways that go across disciplines and yet keep us part of the disciplinary environment. We're too frightened. We're too anxious. We don't know exactly how to keep ourselves in the picture. And I think, I think that that, I worry, getting back to Byron's question, I worry if we will, if we will continue to exist precisely on that, on that point.
Thank you. Yep.
Hi, thanks for a great conversation. Chris said that Simon had a great plan to take into place to establish the relationship between the growing nationalization and diversification of who comes to ICA and the great prestige that's been attached to particular journalists. So I think about the Australian case where I'm really at the moment where Australians start coming to ICA in large numbers. And it's about, and that is connected to the introduction of research evaluation. Frank specifically said, if you get published in on the, your institution will change. And so people really start to think, well, I think with ICA, that's where the same observation obviously happened.
Anybody wants to take that?
I agree. I mean, I hadn't actually thought about it in that way, but it makes perfect sense. And it's consistent with a lot of other data points about the influence of these ranking regimes and overemphasis on citation and other, you know, mediocre metrics of whatever they measure. The only other thing I would say in relation, it's a little bit different, is that some of these same organizations, government entities that have been instituting these regimes have also been influential in beginning to crack open the monopoly of commercial publishers and pushing for open access, which is a really important development in scholarly publishing and in the academic world. And the same organizations that are pushing one, you know, in some sense can be beneficial in the other direction. But there's no question that that's a factor. And the dominance of English, as was discussed yesterday and today.
I would like to ask a question, using my whatever chair moderator privilege to the panel, but also to everybody here, given the talent and experience here. So what happened to all debates? Think about all, any old debate that you mentioned or that we can think of. Are they ever settled? Do they linger on, but with different intensities, sort of more low burn? Are they resolved by accommodation? Basically, you know, having more soup for everybody. So we accommodate and everybody lives together, but in parallel lives? Does anyone win that, any debate? Because we're always engaged in sort of thinking about that, forgetting that there is a long tradition of organs of debates in communication studies. And with the passion that we fight, we never sort of figure out what happened to it, where it led to, you know, and, you know. So that's, that's the thought.
If I could take a stab at that. I think that this is very much connected to disciplinary identity and how we sustain ourselves as a discipline. If we aren't learning from our debates in ways that make us shift, then our debates are going to come back, right? I just now attended a session on, on, you know, global, the global south and journal publishing. We've had that every year for as long as I've been at ICA. So, you know, I think that if we don't, if we don't recognize some, some, something that we agree on and that makes us us and move with it, then of course it's going to keep haunting us.
I'm provoked by my neighbor to be slightly more optimistic, if I may. I think many of us in the last years have had the sense that arguments that we've made have to be made and remade and remade. And we can regard that as a failure somehow, that we didn't make the argument stick and win and move on. Or we say that is what we do. We kind of remake arguments and they morph and they get recontextualized and they find new audiences in different ways. But that past that we're kind of bringing here is a resource. And it's a resource that many of us have occasion to go back to at different times. But, yeah, I mean, Sisyphus is my motto. We just keep pushing, you know, certain arguments up the hill and there are forces that push it back. And that is what we do. And I think that is also why we're here.
Just observing in a practical sense that it feels to me as if we're almost, or in my unit, anyway, we're almost just forgetting to have the debates. Not in a bad way either. It's, when I was just entering the field, it seemed that you had to have a resolution to the debate before you could move on to the next step. And that wasn't going to happen. The debaters were too good. It was just really, and it became the actual activity, the intellectual activity itself was to be part of these debates. And now, you know, I remember just the bookends of the visits to the dean's office in my decade. I had from 75 to 85 of going, of going in at 85 with Steve Chafee to the dean at Stanford and trying to create some justification for the field and doing it based on the debates. We're debating this, we're, you know, it was really defined that way. Now, I don't see Fred Turner here now, but he's our chair now. Helping him, all of our faculty helping him in 2025, go to the same dean's office, different deans, and justify the field. It's just totally bottom up. It is just, there's Instagram and mental health for adolescent girls. Is that interesting? Yes. Misinformation in political campaign. Is that interesting? The history of Silicon Valley and how that influenced the media that are being made. Is that, yes. And so it's kind of that additive bottom up that is, that is, and the debates are a nice matrix. But we're really going by the cell, we're leading with the cell entries and not really worrying too much about the debate. Maybe we should. It may be important to do that. We may be losing some important things. But that's in fact what, what's happening, not without at least academic political success.
Yes, I'd love to see, you know, database about all the ICA debates in the past. I remember we, for some ICAs, we had debates as a closing plenary, right? And however, I want to ask, maybe there are some debates are important for communication scholars. And much of these, many of these debates are, you know, you know, they matter because there are things, you know, that matter within the ivory tower. What I'd like to ask, I think, when talking about practice or, you know, post-colonial theory is that there are another type of bigger debates. They matter not only within the ivory tower, but also beyond. And I think that's, this is, maybe there's no, I don't know whether we should have debate about this. Now the world faces existential crisis, you know, with AI, with geopolitics. But nobody's asking communication scholars, even though we work on these things, right? on these things, right? Why? Why our, we are too busy debating ourselves, and we need to, you know, go beyond the ivory tower to make, to have a debate. First, to understand why our scholarship, you know, I think probably mattered more in my decade, in, you know, in 1995 to 2005, more than, I think maybe beyond our influence beyond the ivory tower has declined since then, even though ICA has grown much bigger, or even though there are many more articles being published. So why that is the case? How can ICA do something to facilitate these larger debates?
One of the things that I always tell students, you know, what I did when I was teaching, was that there's something very distinctive about communication, communication and media studies compared to many other disciplines, and that is the phenomenon that is sort of central. I'm not talking about interpersonal communication, but I'm talking about mediated communication, the phenomenon we study, which is, it changes radically, rather frequently. You know, ICA began 1950. That was the era in which the media was particularly radio, and then very quickly television came to be the dominant medium that, you know, everything had to be understood, you know, politics, social life, commerce. You didn't understand it if you didn't understand the role of television. And I came into the field in this broadcast, centralized broadcast dominant era of an enormous amount of research. But, you know, there was another technological revolution at the end of the 20th century that changed everything. And pretty soon, you know, it was the digital revolution, was the web and all of that. Now we have AI, you know, these revolutions are coming faster. And what I was telling the students was that the challenge, and in many ways the benefit of the field, is that all the settled questions have to be reopened. And I say, you can't say, well, we know because of, you know, X, Y, you know, in 1970 or 1980 or 1990, the definitive studies of this, that, and the other, because, you know, when the technology, when communication technology changed in society, going back to print and beyond, all these other things change. And one reason we keep repeating is because all the old questions are reopened. I mean, questions like parasocial interaction, incredibly important now, but in a different way than it was with radio, third-person effects, you know, anything, agenda setting, I mean, all of these questions. And as Jack says, we're not often enough in the conversations. Eliu Katz, in his inimitable way, you know, I remember the conversation, and many of you may have heard this from Eliu, who said once, that you can look at these three different focuses. It's all power to the producers, all power to the content, all power to the audience. And again, the field, we tend to shift between the ones that say it's all of the production, it's all in the medium, it's all in the owners, it's all in the content, don't look at any of it, it's all in the audience. So we tend to shift between these, in part because the reality changes, and therefore, we have to revisit old questions.
Yeah, I just quickly want to say, very quickly, that at least the debate or the battle going on, at least from what I'm hearing, on many, going to the local level on our campuses, right, is that we had two graduate applicants that I can recall who had offers from media slash communication discipline and information technology disciplines, right? And they chose to go to the information technology disciplines. So the battle that is happening, you know, with what you just mentioned, Larry, with production, content, audience, all being so intensely technologized, if I may use that term, right, is that we are becoming less meaningful because, you know, so many of these things are becoming powered, driven by technological forces of which we don't always have full understanding, right? So the pressures on students to learn the sorts of things that are being taught by information science, right? So I see a battle there going as well. And what will happen, you know, over the next, you know, 25 years will be interesting to see. Back to Saudi Barbie slightly negative framework.
Thank you. I know there are many questions, but unfortunately, we run out of time, and many people need to go to the hotel to make it on time for the next panel. So thank you so much. This was a great panel. Thank you for the panel.